Okay, there you go. All right. Okey dokey. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order of the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, Monday, August 22nd, 2022. And the first order of business tonight is we need to vote on the electronic participation of our Chair, Sherri Blevins. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the information and then I'll take a motion and a second, and then we'll do roll call to get her in. Okay, this is what it says. 2.2-3708.2 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, permits members of the Board of Supervisors to participate in a meeting of the Board through electronic communication means from a remote location in certain situations. Chair Blevins has requested to participate remotely in the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors Virginia meeting scheduled for Monday, August 22nd, 2022 at 7:00 PM to be physically held at the Government Center in Christiansburg. The reason for the request is for medical reasons. Members physically present shall vote to agree to allow participation by other Board members requesting to participate remotely. Do I have a motion to let Sherri participate?
So moved.
Second.
For a second. Okay, and roll call.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Mottz?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzekowski?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Six ayes.
And so I guess at this point then, we'll turn it over to Sherri Blevins to get us into closed meeting. Are you there?
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Chair Biggs. Yes, into closed meeting. Be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby entered into a closed meeting for the purposes of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, one, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employments of any public body. One, Library Board. Two, Personnel, County Attorney Annual Review. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Fritzekowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mottz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Into closed meeting. All right. Do I have a motion to come out of closed meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mottz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzekowski?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by the Board that such closed meetings was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask our county administrator, Mr. Meadows, if he would lead us in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
Yes, if we could rise, please, for a moment of silence, and then I'll lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up first, public hearing. We have a public hearing tonight with the Montgomery County Public School FY22 Year End Operating Fund, carryover, purchase order balances, and school nutrition reimbursement. I don't know if we have anyone signed up on that public hearing?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. But if we have any citizens that would like to come forward, they will have four minutes to address the Board on this public hearing.
Madam Chair, we have no one coming for—oh, are you coming forward on the budget amendments? Okay, we do have one coming forward, yes ma'am.
Sir, if you'll state your name and address, you'll have four minutes to address the Board.
Thank you so much. My name is Jeff Mitchell. I'm from Christiansburg, Virginia. Madam Chairman, I'd like to take a moment to address the Board this evening regarding the proposed—excuse me, one moment here. I'd like to address the Board on the proposed appropriation to the public school system of approximately $4.8 million. So, a man by the name of Alexander Solzhenitsyn, several years ago, he was a famous Russian dissident, and he spent about eight years of his life in the Soviet gulags. And on the day before he was finally exiled to the West, the author, historian, and philosopher, he released the text of what was probably his most famous essay entitled "Live Not By Lies." And Solzhenitsyn equated lies with essentially an ideology. It's the illusion that somehow nature and society can be reshaped to the predetermined specifications of man. Well, given the fact that we are holding a public meeting tonight to consider this supplemental appropriation, I thought it might be good to take just a very brief moment to talk about just one of the lies that I believe personally has been embraced by our public school system. Specifically, I'm speaking about the new transgender policy that was enacted recently by—and was informed by—the Virginia Department of Education. Well, first, it's simply not true, unfortunately, that a biological male can become a female in any sense. The same can be said for biological females who wish to become male. So-called transgender women cannot get pregnant, nor can they have periods, nor can they have abortions, as is asserted by proponents of this ideology. Under no microscope and in no laboratory setting has this truth ever been demonstrated to be false, nor can it be. Difference to affirm transgender students in the lie that they can change their sex is simply cruel and unjust. It's like affirming a child who suffers from anorexia in the belief that somehow they are really overweight and they should therefore skip lunch. If we truly care about these students, and we absolutely should, then we need to help them embrace their biological sex by taking advantage of the spiritual and mental health counseling that can successfully treat the gender dysphoria that they experience. Well, second, this policy infringes upon the God-given rights of our students, our faculty, and staff. If every student has the right to be addressed by names and pronouns that correspond to their gender identity or expression, as stated in the policy, then this violates the free speech and religious rights of those who simply cannot do so for conscience sake. If the school principal is given the authority to allow students to use the locker room or restroom of their choice, then this violates the privacy rights of those students who wish not to shower or use the restroom with those of a different biological sex. And finally, even though it has fallen out of vogue in recent years, there are still a large number of us who understand that Christian theism is a rational, internally coherent, and intellectually defensible worldview that demonstrates quite convincingly that in the beginning, the triune God really did create the heavens and the earth. He then created man in His own image, male and female. And what's more, He made them for a purpose, and that purpose is to glorify Him and to enjoy Him forever. We simply cannot continue or begin to glorify God in the way that we should if we don't live according to the purpose for which He made us. We cannot embrace—we cannot begin to fulfill His purposes unless we come to Him by faith in Jesus Christ, embracing all that He has created us to be. So we—if we are appropriating money to our public school system for the upcoming fiscal year, I ask all sympathetic community members to do this one thing. I ask you to help our students be all—to be all that they were created to be, to help them to take Solzhenitsyn's advice, to live not by lies. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else that wants to come forward on the budget public hearing?
Okay, seeing no one come forward, I will close this public hearing. Guidelines for public address. Mr. Meadows, you'll let me know if there's anyone on the sign-up sheet, but this is the public's time to make comments to the Board of Supervisors. Each individual, speaking as an individual or representative, will have four minutes. Speakers may leave information with the Board clerk or statements. Speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage in personal attacks, use of profanity, or abuse of language, or debate with the audience and not address the supervisors. Okay? No one's on the sign-up sheet? Is that correct?
I know, Madam Chair, we do have five that have signed up. And one thing I want to mention as well tonight, because the buzzer was kind of startling at the last meeting, when we have a public speaker, when there's one minute left, the yellow light on the dais comes on. When the time is up, the red light will come on. It will not beep or buzz at you tonight, but Vice Chair Biggs will wave nicely to you to let—you know your time's up. So, Madam Chair, the first one that we have signed up for public address this evening is Lowell Bowman.
Good evening. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Lowell Bowman. I'm a Republican running for the House of Delegates in the 41st District. I observed the design of the Christiansburg High School at the school board meeting last week. The design was presented over budget by about 30%. And I understand that the design team is going to go back and try to make some changes and cut costs. I've been in construction for over 20 years, and it is my experience that if you cut 30% of the cost, you have to cut the project scope. And that scope is determined, I'm sure, by a projected need. And if you cut that scope by 30%, then the need will not be fulfilled, making the project a failure. So, just wanted to bring that up to the Board. This Board has approved school choice, which is great. It's awesome. I love giving the parents the opportunity to send their children to the school of their choice. I'm 100% behind that. We're fighting for and expect to get true school choice, once approved by the state. When I do get to Richmond, I feel like we will have students leaving the public school system once this is approved. Maybe this project doesn't have to be this large. Just wanted to see if anybody had looked into that. Also was confused to hear the speakers say that 60% of the bathrooms that are going to be built in the new renovation were going to be gender-neutral after construction is complete. I don't think that 60% of the students are gender-neutral. So I'd like to know what design standard that design team used to come up with that figure? If that's a Montgomery County requirement, or a state requirement? I would like to know the answer to that question. Another observation that I made was that the designer mentioned a locker room design that would be a shared room with boys and girls. We didn't have access to the plan. There wasn't anything handed out. They mentioned having some private closets for people to change clothes, but I just really don't think that's a really good idea at all. Having boys and girls changing in the same room is just asking for trouble, if you ask me. I do understand that the building is outdated, and it is the last high school that needs renovation, and that the money has been procured for the project. But I feel like the public needs to be extremely involved before we spend over $100 million on something this size. I could even tell that the school board itself was frustrated with the design and the fact that it was way over budget. I kind of felt like I was observing a kind of a bait-and-switch moment between the Board and the project team itself. The last issue I want to bring up is sexual assault. It is impossible for me to stand here and to support any project for the county school system until something is done to provide support for sexual assault victims. My daughter was a victim of sexual assault, and she was treated like a criminal by the school administration. I just can't believe how much of this is happening in our community. Our young girls need to be treated better. They need support from the school system, and we need to change the policy of how the victims are treated by the schools.
Mr. Bowen, your time is up.
Even if the assault does not happen on campus.
Excuse me.
This should not be a political issue.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next citizen that has signed up to speak this evening is John Ashley.
Good evening. I hope you're all having a good night. My name is John Ashley. I live in Christiansburg. I usually speak about the family court, but I'm here just to talk about the school issue. Ending in 1964, with Griffin v. the Prince Edward County School Board, racist Democrats shut down the school system to fight desegregation. Fifty-eight years later, racist Democrats have traded their Klan hoods for leather sandals. Because a voucher program was used by the 1964 Democrats, the 2022 Democrats call it racist. Meanwhile, in a 2021 article by The Hill, 84% of black students lack proficient math skills and 85% lack proficient reading skills. Also, per a 2021 Washington Examiner article, Democrats represent 65% of taxpayers with household incomes of $500,000 or more. The public schools are failing these childrens, and the leather sandal-wearing racist elitists don't want a voucher program to stop the upward mobility. The most voted-for president in American history, Joe Biden, said in the 1970s about school-busting programs, that he didn't want his kids growing up in the racial jungle. And that's what they scared will happen to the private schools they send their kids to if the voucher program passes. In 2018, President Joe Biden said, "Poor kids are just as smart as the white kids. They're not trying to hide who they are." One of the school district—on the school district's website, on page 21 of the strategic plan, it says, quote, "Continue a vigorous recruitment plan to attract and maintain staff that reflects and embraces our school's diversity." It sounds like discriminatory hiring practices. If all the students in the school are white, will the district only hire white teachers? You are going to get sued. Expect the taxpayers to foot the bill, and because of non-disclosure agreements, none of us will know about that. Is this what happened to the missing school superintendent? Of course, this policy has lots of critical theory keywords in it. So does that policy actually mean that a hiring preference is made against straight white males? The bad guy's the most critical theory ideology. If you are a white, straight male—or if you are a white male, does being homosexual increase the chances of being hired by the school district? Applying critical theory, the answer is yes. That would mean that the school district has a disproportionate number of gay, white male teachers. Now, I don't care what two, four, or six consenting adults do in the privacy of a cheap hotel room, but as a parent, I would prefer that my child's teacher be the most qualified, not who got the most critical theory points. I'm pretty sure this isn't what Dr. King had in mind when he made his "I Have a Dream" speech. Now, let's talk about the school's inclusive policy for gender dysphoria, a mental condition recognized by the APA. You don't tell depressed people to commit suicide. You don't tell the schizophrenic person that people are after them. But in this situation, they play along and say that men can have babies. Besides the few children with this actual condition, there is an army of parents and teachers that suffer from munchausen by proxy and encourage this to seek attention for themselves, and are pressuring children 10 years too young to drink alcohol or to buy a handgun to make life-altering decisions. In 1924, racist Virginia Democrats passed legislation authorizing involuntary sterilization for the intellectually disabled. They took a girl named Carrie Buck to the Supreme Court to make sure it was constitutional. In May 2022, Jennifer Bowers, Ph.D., published a paper on gender dysphoria. She lists the side effects of puberty-blocking medication, including sterilization. She also notes that Planned Parenthood is giving these drugs on the initial visit without any mental health assessment or parental knowledge. Planned Parenthood was founded by Margaret Sanger, who supported eugenics and was pen pals with Hitler. Now, as it was during the last progressive movement 100 years ago, the cure for mental illness is sterilization, this time with puberty blockers and sex-change operations. The high suicide rate is because they look for depressed kids and tell them that junk science snake oil will cure them. And besides making it worse, it doesn't cure the underlying issues. All the parents are trying to turn them into a science experiment to get critical theory points. Soon, family court reform won't matter anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley.
Because generations won't have kids.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Our next speaker that signed up this evening is Mr. Gary Duncan.
I'm Gary Duncan, and I represent the Duncan Automotive Network. We've been in business here in Montgomery County since 1955. I guess that's 67 years. I tell everybody I got a Ph.D. Papa had a data shift, so. But we have been involved here. We employ a lot of folks, have for years, and we create jobs, we create taxes. We have been in the middle of this merchants' capital fight for a lot of years. If you look around at the counties and municipalities that we have to compete with, with our different franchises, it's not a fire tax, and we would ask that you do away with it, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, our next speaker this evening is Mr. Jim Cowan.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of BackCountry.com. They sent a note out, I think, this afternoon, sharing some of their thoughts, and asked if I would share that with you this evening. Most importantly, to thank you for taking the time to give some consideration to this issue. In the 10 years that BackCountry.com has been in Montgomery County since they built that facility, they've had tremendous growth and success. They're very proud to be a member of the business community here. They're now up to over 300 full-time employees. They have a tremendous workforce, and they're excited about that. But as they've grown and become more successful, this merchants' capital tax has had a very large impact on them. They're now up to—I think last year was $340,000. I think it's in their letter. Most states have gotten rid of this. Most municipalities, a lot of them don't apply this kind of charge on their growth. And if they continue to grow and be successful here, which is what we want, that burden will only grow and create a disparity or a penalty for being located here, which is where they want to be and want to grow. And so they just wanted to thank you for taking a little bit of time to consider this. They're happy to provide whatever information and support for your consideration of it, but they do think it's time, as do some others, to look at that issue, whether that's appropriate tax or revenue source in this county, because it really does motivate you to look—to put your growth somewhere else, right? Do you put inventory here in Montgomery County? Or do you drop ship more stuff from another warehouse in another locale? warehouse in another locality so that you can lower your inventory here? How much supply do you keep? How much do you grow? Do you use that additional pad they have here to have some expansion? And they have to consider the impact of these things. So they're excited to be here. They're proud. They're very thankful for all the support they've gotten in coming to Montgomery County and we see this as just a progression of that conversation and look forward to working with you on that issue. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Board members, our next speaker this evening is David Hagan.
David Hagan, 1422 Smith Creek Road, Christiansburg. I address this board. Came here about 25 years ago, obviously a lot thinner and more hair and about to repeal merchants' capital tax, that it was just devastating to our business. And it really was devastating at the time. At that time, we got a very bold no. We need money for schools. These students, they also, their parents need jobs as well. And, you know, by being the first or second-largest taxpayer for this tax for the last 25 years, yeah, we have a $33 million payroll. So when we say we support the county, we support the county in a great way. And we also support our school system. I think everybody's pretty aware of all the things that we do, try to do for the schools. This is a voluntary tax. And when I say it's voluntary, what do I mean? It's truly voluntary. There's 5,000 businesses in the county, 900 of them file. Of the people who file, more than 500 pay less than $100. 10 merchants in your county pay 51% of your tax. And you would say you have all the inventory. You should. Think about what a ridiculous idea it is that the more inventory we bring into the county to create more jobs, you have to pay more tax on. Doesn't matter if you sell it, doesn't matter if you lose money on it, doesn't matter. If we bring more and more and more into the county, you pay more tax. That's ridiculous. It's just a ridiculous thought. And no progressive county has this, including Pulaski County. They repealed this tax. You know, you don't want to be in a position where you feel like that you're being taken advantage of, but, you know, I mentioned to a few of you that, you know, patiently, you know, you've waited 25 years to bring this up again. And I think the timing is right. I think that, again, all progressive counties have abolished this tax and repealed it. And this is certainly a good time to be fair to your merchants and repeal this tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, that's all the folks that we have signed up for public address this evening, but if there are others that would like to come forward, if you'll come forward and state your name and address, you'll have four minutes to address the board.
Good evening. I'm Tom Bernard. I reside at 630 Tower Road, Christiansburg. And I wanted to talk about the personal property tax. A couple of years ago, I bought an RV. I was assessed at higher value than I paid for it. That just isn't right. Now they're talking about changing that policy and using NADA and other national organizations that come up with what your appraisal is on that property, assessed value is. And at no time, I don't know what the answer is completely, but I do know that at no time should you have to pay more than you can prove you paid for the item. And the question's going to come up again because we bought a newer RV and we paid X number of dollars for it that I already know they're going to say is worth more because of the national average. And the problem is, is I live here in Christiansburg in Montgomery County. I don't live in California. I don't live in Georgia. I don't live in other places that have higher values for their items that they're selling, whether it be a vehicle or whether it be a RV or anything. And I don't think it's fair that we should have to pay at any point in time an assessed value that is more than we paid for the article itself to begin with. And if you can prove that, which in most cases we can. So that's my thoughts. Think about it. I ask you to make, think about it and come up with the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward to address the board?
Yes, ma'am. We have another lady coming forward. Good evening.
Deidra Reynolds-Journey, Christiansburg, Virginia. Tonight, as a former public school teacher for 32 years, now retired, I would like to toss some questions out there that we all need to contemplate and inquire about. Whose children are they? When did this become a debate with the parents versus the government, the teacher unions, the administrators, the school board, the board of supervisors, and the teachers? Should schools be allowed to instill godless morals, values, and beliefs on the parents' children? We have heard tonight about the rising cost of the new high school renovation, but when will we talk about the cost of the learning loss of our children? Why have our children lost over a year's worth of public education when private schools were able to function during COVID, but the public schools remain closed? What is the rate of and how many of our children have or have had depression or suicidal thoughts because of these closures? Why are schools dumbing down our educational standards? Are our children being taught how to think or what to think? What actually is equity, inclusion, CRT, SEL, CSE, gender fluidity? And what ideas is this putting into our children's minds? Has the school system continually changed the name of these lessons to confuse the parents? Have you, parents, seen the curriculum beforehand and had the opportunity to opt out of these lessons? Why are students bullying and committing violent acts in school, not being disciplined and making our schools unsafe? Who is responsible for the sexual assaults? Who and how many adults will be monitoring the new gender-neutral bathrooms, locker rooms, and locker room showers? Will this be pulling teachers out of their classrooms? Are you willing for your daughter to use the bathrooms and change clothes in the locker rooms with boys she goes to school with? Why is sexualization and transgenderism being pushed in our schools? Are sexual acts and language that is not age-appropriate being taught to our children? Why are biological males being allowed to participate in female sports, creating an unlevel playing field? Do you know what the 1619 Project is? Why is it so historically inaccurate? How can you teach racism and think it will eradicate racism? How are teachers' unions linked to all this? Why are teachers' unions spending all our money on politics? Are they pushing this curriculum by giving over 98% of teachers' dues to the people responsible for the demise of our educational system? Why are they intimidating teachers to join? Did you know communist countries target children in schools because they are the easiest target? Is this what we have come to, following and implementing their manifesto? Do you, as taxpayers, want to continue to fund the miseducation of our children? All of you have heard and seen what this agenda is doing to our children and our good teachers who are leaving the profession. Stop being fearful. When do we say enough is enough? After all, whose children are they?
Ma'am, could you state your address for us?
180 Marquis Drive.
Christiansburg?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other citizens that would like to come forward to speak this evening?
Good evening. My name is Kim Bowman. I live in Christiansburg on Arrowhead Trail. The Education Department has found that reports on sexual violence at schools rose from about 9,600 in 2015 and '16 school year to nearly 15,000 in the '17, '18 school year. And they don't have the reports out after those dates, but that reflects an increase of more than 50% in children being sexually assaulted in our schools. Comprehensive sex education is harmful to our children. What I'm going to read embarrasses me to say in public, but it's being taught to our children. Number one, comprehensive sexual education sexualizes children. It normalizes sex ed, child sex, and desensitizes children to sexual things. It may give examples of children having sex or imply that their peers are sexually active. It may glamorize sex, use graphic materials, teach explicit sexual vocabulary, or encourage discussion of sexual experiences, attractions, fantasies, and desired. By the way, I do think I have the right to speak on this behalf. I was molested for nine years as a child. My sister Patty committed suicide after being molested for nine years as a child as a ward of the state of Virginia in Montgomery County schools. Teachers are teaching children to consent to sex. It may teach children how to negotiate sexual encounters or how to get consent from other children to engage in sexual acts with them. It normalizes anal and oral sex, introduces these high-risk sexual behaviors to children, and may normalize them. May admit vital, important facts such as the extremely high STD rates, such as HIV and HPV, and oral and anal cancer rates associated with these acts. It promotes homosexuality and bisexual behaviors, promotes acceptance of or exploration of diverse sexual orientations, sometimes in violation of the state education laws, but it may admit vital health information and/or may provide medically inaccurate information about homosexually active people. It teaches children sexual pleasure. Teaching children about sexual pleasure may tell them they are entitled to have or have the right to sexual pleasure or encourage children to seek out sexual pleasure. It promotes solo or mutual masturbation. While masturbation can be a normal part of childhood development, encouraging masturbation at young ages makes children more vulnerable to pornography use, sexual addictions, or sexual exploitation. It may describe masturbation or provide instruction.
Ms. Bowen, your time is up. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward to speak? We have one coming forward.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Price. I live on Merrimack Road in Blacksburg. I'm going to basically summarize what you've heard so far this evening. I'm going to demonstrate or show you some pictures. These pictures are extremely graphic, but it is what's happening to our children in public schools. A lot of parents are unaware and a lot of the people who have voted for these policies, who encourage these policies, administer these policies, I'm wondering, are they really aware? This first one is a girl. She declared herself, identifies as male. So she had radical elected double mastectomy performed in Massachusetts, and this was as a result of her being sucked into the groomer culture at school. And this is mutilation of her body. I have another one that I want to show, and this one is hard for me to show. I'm embarrassed to even do it. But this is what these policies are doing to our kids. Boston Children's Hospital cut off flesh from the girl's forearm and her thigh and remade her a non-functioning penis. And this is a child. These are the things that we're doing. How did we get here? We got here from, remember I talked about the slippery slope? That's how we got here. It's the model policies. And if you read the Virginia Department of Education model policies that have been adopted by the Montgomery County School Board, all of these are in there. Even the remodeling of the school to focus on transgender bathrooms. So why can't we take Christiansburg High School and remodel the school, refurbish the school? Boys' girls' bathroom. But the whole focus of the presentation from the design team on Tuesday night was centered around making this space, they called it a space, where all the kids come in, they change clothes, they shower, boys and girls. And then if there's somebody who doesn't want, or they feel a little bit embarrassed and they don't want to be out in that space, then they can go into these stalls. Now, the model policy says that those stalls cannot have locks on them or keys attached to them. And I gave out tonight to every one of you a copy of the model policies. But this is where all of this is coming from, and you're asking the citizens of Montgomery County to pay for it. We, the people, are not okay with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Seeing no one, Chair of Leavins, I believe we can close public address.
Yes, ma'am. Close public address. Next addendum.
We have no addendum this evening, Madam Chair.
No addendum tonight. All right. Be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors enters into a work session for the purpose of discussing the following. One, personal property tax. Two, merchants' capital tax. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair of Leavins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Board members, our first presentation this evening under work session is an update on personal property taxes, and our Director of Management and Budget, Mark McGruder, is here this evening. Mark, thank you for being here and sharing this information with the board.
Good evening. Okay, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our personal property motor vehicles. Just want to give a little background. In April of this year, I came in front of the board and talked to the board about issues that were facing the fiscal year '23 budget. And one of those issues was motor vehicle valuation. At that time, some neighboring localities were reporting higher than normal NADA values, which has now become the J.D. Power guide. Some of those values were as high as 33% above previous values. As you know, the COVID-19 pandemic caused widespread business and manufacturing closures and various market disruptions. And over the past two years, auto dealers have experienced low to no inventory. So we had an undersupply of new vehicles hitting the market that caused a demand for used vehicles. And so at this point, we're seeing that used vehicle valuations are currently inflated, which will likely cause localities' motor vehicle tax collections to exceed normal growth patterns. So the county just received values from the Commissioner of the Revenue, and those values indicate that assessed values exceed the fiscal year '23 estimate by 27%, and that equates to about $4.8 million in additional revenue. To kind of put it in To kind of put it in perspective, if you compare book to book, our normal growth pattern on a yearly basis is around 24 million. In other words, if you look at how much new value is added to the book per year, it's around 24 million. This year, we added 237 million in one year. That's roughly a tenfold increase in value. Used vehicles normally decrease rather than increase in value, and we expect values to correct at some point. The question becomes, when is that point? And I don't know the answer to that. But we do not expect the inflated values to continue for an extended period of time. So I'm going to talk about four separate options that the board can consider for addressing this particular issue. Before I go into the different options, I want to talk about some issues that are presented under all the options I'm going to share with you. And that is, one, personal property tax bills will be mailed later than normal. And taxpayers will have a shorter time period to pay their bills based on the due date or whether or not we extend that due date. Normally, at this meeting, the board considers adopting the PPTRA rate. And that PPTRA rate will depend upon which option the board considers this evening. Okay, so there's four options. Two of these options are brand-new options that weren't previously available for the board to consider. And I'll go through each one of those. So option one is to make no changes, and I'll go through each option individually as we get there. Option two is a new option for the board, which we could create a new class of personal property with a lower tax rate. Option three is we could provide tax rebate checks. That, again, is another option that was not previously available. And then the fourth option is to request the Commissioner of the Revenue to establish an assessment ratio. So I'll go through each one of these and discuss the possible issues with each one. Okay, so option one would be that we would make no changes. We would assess personal property using the traditional method. We would not establish a new class of tangible personal property for automobiles, passenger trucks, motorcycles, campers, and other recreational vehicles. We would maintain the current tax rate of $2.55 per $100 of assessed value. And the PPTRA rate would be set at 28.59%. That would be down from 35.05%, which was the rate last year in 2001, or 2021. Estimated tax collections would exceed the original estimates by approximately 4.8 million and could be used to address one-time needs. This option would provide no relief to taxpayers. Option two would be to create a new class of personal property with a lower tax rate. So there's new legislation allowing for this option, but it's only applicable from January 1 of 2022 to January 1 of 2025. So again, I think economists think that this thing is going to correct, so we're given an option for a few years to address this because this is sort of an abnormality, so to speak. This is not something that typically happens. We would assess personal property using the traditional method. We would establish a new class of tangible personal property for automobiles, passenger trucks, motorcycles, campers, and other recreational vehicles. We would need to establish a lower personal property tax rate for this class. The current rate is $2.55 per 100. To go revenue neutral, and that would be assuming the normal growth pattern that we would normally receive, the rate would be set at $2.01 per $100 of assessed value. Under that scenario, the PPTRA rate would be set at 36.36%. The county's fiscal year 23 revenue would be approximately what we budgeted, and that is based on normal growth patterns. The county would provide tax relief to taxpayers. And then if or when the value of personal property motor vehicle decreases in the future, the county would then have to increase the tax rate or cut expenditures to reflect the changes in revenue. And I think as we go forward, like this year, regardless of which option we discuss, we will need to look at this again probably next August because 237 million in one year is just completely unheard of. And I have no idea if that's going to happen again or if things are going to swing back the other direction. Option three, we could provide tax rebate checks. Again, new legislation allows localities to return a portion of personal property tax revenues to taxpayers in any year in which the locality reports a surplus. So previously, there was a law on the books that allowed us to return real property surplus funds. They changed that law to add personal property, particularly because of the massive increase that people were seeing across the state. We would assess personal property using the traditional method. We would not establish a new class of tangible personal property for automobiles, passenger trucks, motorcycles, campers, and other recreational vehicles. We would maintain the current tax rate of $2.55 per 100 of assessed value. The PPTRA rate would be set at 28.59%. And we would provide rebate checks to citizens based on the difference between normal revenue growth and the inflated vehicle valuations. The county's fiscal year 23 revenue, net of the rebates, would be approximately what we budgeted for the fiscal year, which is based on normal growth patterns. The county would provide tax relief to taxpayers. Under this particular scenario, the taxpayer will have to pay the tax upfront and then wait to receive a rebate check. The rebate process would take a month or longer to process and require significant personnel resources and create some level of inefficiency. There's some uncertainty as to whether or not we have an automated mechanism to provide an adjustment option in the county's financial software program. There could be mailing address issues. We could have issues with the timely delivery of the rebate checks through the post office. There are costs associated with issuing refund checks. There are personnel costs. There's check stock costs, envelopes, postage. And then finally, there's staff time if we would need to do stop payments on those checks or we had to issue lost refund checks. Okay, our last option would be to request that the Commissioner of Revenue established an assessment ratio. The board would have to request, the board would have to request the Commissioner of the Revenue to certify that the J.D. Power Pricing Guide, previously known as NADA, values are inflated due to the pandemic. And then an 80% assessment ratio is more in line with the fair market value of vehicles. This would require additional research and processing by the Commissioner's office. There would be some manual keying of data, particularly with supplemental bills. The board would need to approve a resolution concurring with the Commissioner of the Revenue's recommendation. Again, we would not establish a new class of tangible personal property for automobiles, passenger trucks, motorcycles, campers, and other recreational vehicles. We would maintain the current tax rate at $2.55 per 100 of assessed value. The PPTRA rate would be, is estimated at 35.82%. And the reason, I've got real numbers on the first two scenarios where I've given you what the PPTRA rate is. Under this particular scenario, I would want to recalculate that number based on the 80% being applied across the system. But I would bring that number back to you if you decide to choose that option. The county's revenue would be approximately what we budgeted for fiscal year 23, and that is based on normal growth patterns. And then the county would provide tax relief to taxpayers. All right, that is all I have on this particular topic, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
And Madam Chair and Board members, I would like to mention that as Mark went through the four options tonight, we would love to hear some discussion among the board if there's one that you would prefer. Because if we can reach a consensus this evening with the board on which one makes the most sense to you, then we can move forward with getting that moving forward for future action.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Mark. We'll go around the room and see if supervisors have questions or comments. And we'll start off with Supervisor Bun.
Thanks so much, Mark. That's great. Appreciate the options. Basically, we only have these four options because it's code. Is that what's going on?
Yeah, there were two options that were already there for you. In other words, you know, what we currently charge, and we've done traditionally for a long time. The fourth option, an assessment ratio, has been on the book for years. We've just never chosen that as an option. And then the two new legislative initiatives that came this year. So that provided two more options. And again, one, you know, has basically a sunset provision. So, you know, I think people think that this is going to be a short-term thing. And so once the market corrects itself, that we will see, you know, some adjustment downward, which is what normally happens. So, you know, I think we had that option for a few years, but, you know, at some point, we would have to reconsider that. Because once that sunset provision goes away, all of your personal property has to be taxed at the same rate.
It goes back to the way that it is now. That's what you're saying?
Well, it doesn't have to be that rate, but all of your personal property has to be taxed at the same rate.
Which is happening right now.
Which is happening right now.
Can we, I mean, I know on your slide, on Slide six, it says it would sunset in 2025. Can we make this so it's an annual come-to-the-board? An annual, we're not, so we're not approving it for like three years?
You certainly could, and other localities have done that. They've said, we're going to do this for one year, and then we'll relook at this the next year. I think, to be prudent, I think, given not only the issues that I've discussed with you already about sales tax, it's sales tax issues. This is another revenue category that is through the roof. And if you had asked me, you know, two or three years ago, would we put $237 million in one year on the book, I'd say, you're crazy. But here we are. So, but, you know, for me to tell you, you know, we've talked about the crystal ball, you know. I wish I could tell you what was going to happen going into next year. We have seen some used values drop. But until January, when the new pricing guide comes out, I can't tell you what that's going to look like.
So, let me, I did write some notes, so let me ask you some questions while I've got the mic. For options, any of these options except for make no changes, how do we return to a normal rate when things normalize? How does that actually happen? Let's say that we did sunset in 2025, but next year, really, things got normalized. Is there a method to go back to the way things were?
Yeah, I think what we'll do, like we did this year, you know, until I have real numbers and can tell you exactly where we're headed, you know, we said, hold off on making a decision. You can adopt a rate, and as long as you can change that rate up to the point at which the Commissioner of the Revenue issues the book. And so that's why I said, let's wait until August. I'll have numbers that are, you know, pretty close to where we are. And at that point, I can tell you more clearly where we're sitting and what the impact is going to be. So I think, you know, what I'm going to do, depending upon which option you decide on, I'm going to come back with a revenue projection based on those decisions that takes into consideration all that stuff and say, okay, this is where I think we're going to be in the budget. And then when August rolls around, we're going to get the real numbers. And hopefully, if we, if the Commissioner sends the information off early, again, like she did this year, I'll have an inkling about where we're headed and can kind of say, okay, this is where I think we need to be. And then when August rolls around, then we can relook at this and say, okay, how does this compare to where we thought we were going to be and make adjustments either way?
And you're mentioning the fact that you asked for August to come around so that you could make this presentation for us. And that's specifically the reason why people are going to have a smaller window to actually pay because you asked for this delay. And we obviously accepted it because we understood what was going on, and we wanted to make sure that we were as well-informed as possible as far as our options as well as the impact, right?
Right. So normally, you would be adopting the PPTRA rate tonight. And generally, when that would occur, then, you know, the tax rate's already been set. So if you didn't change that, then we would move forward. Usually, the information would make it to the Treasurer's Office around September 1st. And they usually have about two to three weeks to process it, and then they send stuff out, and people start getting bills in October. So we're going to be at a minimum of two weeks, maybe three weeks behind, given the fact that, you know, depending upon which decision you guys make, what the impact will be.
So for option two, you don't, and maybe I'm not, so for options three and four, you clearly say there's some increased costs, but you don't say there's any increased cost for option two implementation.
You know, reset, if you would reset the rate, you know, there, I think the Commissioner could go in and change the rate structure, and it would be fairly quick. I mean, we'd still have a little bit of a delay because we'd have to do that process. But, you know, that would, there would be less manual work by anybody in doing that option. I think the bigger issue with that particular option the board needs to consider is once you lower the rate, then we would have to consider when and if the values plummet, adjusting a rate in order to do that or cut the budget. You know, you have one or two options there, in other words. But you would have to, you would have to look at that. And it would be considered a tax rate increase even if we made it revenue neutral because you still have to advertise it as a tax rate increase. So even though an individual's tax liability wouldn't change, you would still have to advertise it as such.
Okay. So personally, I think it's definitely fair to, in one method or another, to reduce, quote-unquote, the tax rate that we have so that we're not getting the $4 million of extra revenue that we weren't expecting, which is coming out of our residents' pockets. So for me, the, the way to go about it would be the least expensive way, meaning manual labor. You know, I know it's going to be a small piece of $4 million, but that also puts more work on the different offices here when they should be doing other things. Personally, I'd love to have a year, you know, window and just keep coming back. And even if it's, we come back every six months to re-verify, yep, we're on track, or no, we have to make some adjustments. So I would, it seems to me that keeping it revenue-neutral moving forward, however the method that people, you know, most people up here agree with, if in fact we agree with this little disruption, that's the way that I would prefer to go. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd.
I think you answered my question. But just to clarify, I just wanted to make sure option two is a cleaner, easier fix and probably easier to go back.
Yes, I would, I would think so. I mean, the Treasurer and the Commissioner here believe in the audience. But I think of the options, there's less work on that particular option. The bigger issue, again, is that we would have to consider if values, and they will plummet at some point. I don't know what they're, I mean, it's happened before in my tenure here. I just don't know by what degree it will happen. But if they were to come back down, then in order to make up the deficit, you would have to adjust the tax rate accordingly.
Right. But, and we already consider that every year anyway.
That's correct.
So, yeah, that's all I have.
I'd like to add, under option two, we've given the revenue-neutral rate, assuming normal growth, but it could be a different rate. It wouldn't have to be 201. It could be whatever you chose.
Right.
Supervisor Fitchakowski.
Yeah, coming into this meeting and looking at what other jurisdictions are doing, I thought that the rebate would be probably the easiest thing. But now, looking at what you've presented, Mark, it looks like the Treasurer's Office would be doing double duty, having to issue rebate checks. On option four, you say requires additional research and processing by the Commissioner of the Revenue. What would that be?
Well, I think, you know, Well, I think, you know, as we look at these options, you know, it's kind of brand new. And we haven't really considered this option, even though it was on the table for many years in the code. It was never really considered as an option. So, the last few weeks, when we were looking at this and considering it, there's been a few things that have popped up that, you know, we've realized, oh, well, this issue is presented, and this issue is presented. So, we did realize that there is a mechanism that we could do a depreciation in our accounting software program that would allow us to do this. But there are issues. There isn't a mechanism for supplemental billing. So, we would have to do some manual keying for supplemental billing. Also, when you apply the depreciation to the vehicle, the way the system worked in the past, it would grab that vehicle's value from the previous year and then depreciate it again. And so, you would, by essentially taking a 20% depreciation on it, then you'd have it, the next year, you wouldn't be taking the original value and depreciating it. It would, it would take, you'd almost be double counting. And so, we would probably have to go in and manually adjust all of those values for those particular vehicles. So, there would be a little bit of work. But, again, the Commissioner is here, and she could tell you more about the details of the mechanics of that.
Well, your description of it, I already hate it. And Option Three with the rebate checks, also, I left out the part that folks would have to be sending in a larger amount to wait for that rebate. I think that's kind of cruel thing to do, but I, I believe Option Two looks the best to me. But thank you.
Supervisor Keen.
Thank you for coming down this evening. On Option Three, Page Eight and Nine, could you tell me the difference in both of them? Page Eight and Nine?
I'm sorry, say that one more time, please.
On Eight, Page Eight and Nine, I know one of them says the citizens would have to pay all at one time and then wait on the check.
Right.
And on Page Eight. On Option Two, I'm just kind of worried about if we move to Option Two later on down the road when the assessed goes down. I'm just going to be honest with you, there's no way under the sun I'm going to vote to raise a tax increase on that one.
Right. So, that was, that was my point earlier in the sense that, you know, when we look at revenue neutral, which you're going to be looking at revenue neutral here in January when we look at real property, because we're in a four-year assessment cycle. The revenue neutral rate will give you what the exact same tax liability. So, in other words, if you, if you're paying $500 a year on your vehicle, if I give you the revenue neutral rate, you'll still pay $500 a year. But you're correct, you would have to increase the rate. Even though the person's tax bill didn't change, you would still have to adjust the rate. It would be the same thing if, for instance, the real estate plummeted, and you had to increase the rate in order just to bring it back to the exact tax liability.
Right.
You'd still, you know, but under those particular instances, because of the provision under the law, you wouldn't have to advertise it as such. But in this particular case, you would.
Yeah. You'd have to advertise it as a tax increase. I was just wondering, you know, if, could we go back and just say your, your tax bill was $500. This time, it's $1,000. Is there some way we could sit back without cutting the tax rate back and moving back to 500?
The only options you have are these four options. You can leave it around and give them a refund check, or you can adjust the rate, or we can apply an assessment ratio.
And Option Four sort of does what you're asking. It's similar to reassessment, too, as Mark discussed. It's not going to be dollar for dollar, so we wouldn't look at individual, specific people's property and see how they were affected. We would use an overall rate to decrease the amount that they would owe. But Number Four comes closest to what you're asking.
I like the rebate check. I mean, I just don't want to put no more burden on the citizens than we have to. That's all. Thank you.
Supervisor Demont.
Thank you, Mark. I'm just going to page through and ask questions that I jotted down as we went. You mentioned our normal value at 24 million. This year, we're at 237 million. This is a combination of new personal property purchases and also the inflation?
No. So, actually, so what normally happens is you have a certain segment of your motor vehicles that, that kind of drop. And those mostly are used vehicles. So, you know, I went back and looked at the history. And normally, what you would see is you'd see a drop in the used vehicles, and then there would be a lot of new vehicles that were added, and they would offset that decrease. So, you'd have some decreases over here with the majority of the vehicles. And then, you'd have a whole bunch of brand-new vehicles that would come in, and then they would be kind of high, and it would offset that, the drop from the book balance. That isn't what happened this year. So, we had hardly any new values or new vehicles coming into the books, and most of the vehicle growth is all from the used vehicle market.
Okay, okay. That is mind-blowing. It makes sense. Well, it doesn't make sense, but how you explained it made it make sense to me. The two new options permitted by the General Assembly this year are Options Two and Three. Previously, we didn't have those two options. Create a new class or provide rebate checks?
That's correct.
Okay. We don't need to talk about Option Number One. Option Number Two, Supervisor Bone touched on it a little bit, but we could approve Option Number Two for review after one year. So, we could set up a system where we're reviewing it annually to determine if we're still in line.
Right. So, essentially, what would happen is if you decided on the rate, changing the rate, then, you know, next spring, when I present the proposed budget, we would use that rate going in. And I would tell you, you know, essentially, what that would drive as far as revenues go. But the concern is, is that, you know, when the values get added to the book, we could be looking at that rate not being enough to cover what we budgeted, if things swing like this. And so, I would say, again, we would adopt the budget, knowing what we know at the time. And then, when August rolls around and we get real values, we come back here, kind of like we're doing now, and saying, okay, what do you want to do?
Or 4.8 million dollars short.
Exactly. Or whatever the number is, and say, okay, how do you want to address this? And at that point, if you would choose the rate option, then you would have to advertise an increase in the rate in order to get us to whatever number you want the budget to represent at that point.
So, the quick and dirty on what I'm hearing on that one is we're buying trouble in the future, possibly. By doing it this way, we could lower the rate next, for this year. And then, next year, we could be in a world of hurt if the valuations plummet. And also, if this Board needs to either deal with what, what do we do with a gap in our budget? Or how do we make up for the lost revenue that we then would not have anymore?
I don't know that I would say it's a world of hurt, because I think there's always options, you know, to address some of these things. I'm just making you aware of potential issues that you would face. You know, it doesn't matter which option you choose, there's going to be issues associated with it. And you're going to have 4.8 million dollars in excess revenue that I'm going to have to put somewhere in the budget that potentially could go away, which means that I can't, I don't think that I would want to recommend to the Board expenditure authority over that 4.8 million dollars thinking it might go away. So, I think it doesn't really matter which option you choose. There are issues, there's problems with all of them, because this is just not normal.
Okay. On Option Number Three, you said that new legislation allows localities to return a portion of personal property tax revenues to taxpayers in any year in which the locality reports a surplus. So, I'm wondering what the definition of a surplus is if our locality currently has millions of dollars in liabilities.
I can't answer that for you, to be honest with you. We had this conversation earlier. You know, I don't know, the legislation is kind of open-ended in that this provision, particularly for real estate, has been on the books for years. And, you know, it's been an option, but, you know, from a legal standpoint, I'd have to defer to the county attorney.
So, what's a surplus, Marty?
I think it's whatever you guys say it is.
Oh, okay.
No, what I mean by that is, let's say you guys collect $5 million in real estate, but you say, hey, we're only going to use 4 million of it. That 1 million's a surplus. So, instead of putting in a reserve, you guys decide to rebate it back.
Or putting it towards our debt service, the money that we already have.
Well, then, it's not surplus, then you're using it, yeah. So, it's, are you going to use it or not? If you're not going to use it, then you have the option to rebate it back. That's when it becomes a surplus. So, it's a legislative decision.
And then, on Option Number Four, just as we're thinking about that one, I'm thinking about how the Boards of Supervisors have the Virginia Association of Counties. And I think there's a similar association for the Commissioner of the Revenue. This might be a more appropriate question for her. But is there any research being conducted on behalf of Commissioners of Revenue that would assist with the option of establishing an assessment ratio?
I don't have an answer for that, but I don't know if Helen wants to speak on that or not.
She's getting up. Thank you so much, Helen, for coming forward. I appreciate it.
Good evening. The Commissioners are all working on different ways. Some do, some do the tax cut. There's several that have done the ratio. Some are keeping the money. It's just all over the board. But we talk to make sure we're doing by code. Okay?
So, if the Board selected to do this assessment ratio, would you have some resources already that you could speak with about that, that have already done it, or maybe have?
Our main problem is the system itself. And we think we have figured out how to do it.
Okay.
Okay? We've been working on it every, all summer, thanks to Mark.
Okay.
Okay?
I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
And then, if we did elect Option Number Four with the assessment ratio, how do we get back out of it? Is it just a one-time?
You could do it as a one-time. Some localities have specifically stated in the resolution that it's a one, just for one year, and then we would revisit it. Again, we would do the same scenario I suggested before. I'd bring the budget to you, assuming that you were going to continue that. And then, when we got values in August, I'd say, okay, this is what it looks like. What do you want to do at that point?
So, and I'll just state a little bit of my own opinion. I am not in favor of a 4.8 million dollar windfall coming down due to a significant inflation of the used car, personal property tax, taxable items. So, I'm interested in looking at all of the options that give us a way out of that. But I also don't want to put us into a corner where we're having to talk about tax increases or decreases up or down the road because of how we've dealt with this situation. I don't, I'm interested to talk with all of you about this. I think, in my opinion, the net result should be that our taxpayers should be paying similarly to what they paid before the inflation. And so, how we get there is up to us to decide. But I appreciate the information quite a bit. Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Thank you for bringing the options, Mark. You know, going through them, I'm leaning towards Option Two. And I do realize the discussion about, okay, you might have to come back and raise it. I think if we were to go with Option Two, that I would recommend, as you guys know, I always are going to recommend an educational approach so that something could go out to our citizens, explaining exactly why we were doing this, with the thought that it will be reviewed every year, because we don't know what's going to happen. But I'm in total agreement with everyone else that we need to do something to give back to our citizens because of the inflation and what has happened. And I've gotten calls from some of my constituents about this and have talked to them about it also. So, right now, I'm leaning towards Option Two, but I'm open to, you know, discussing whatever, you know, anybody else might want to do for consensus. So, that's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Biggs. Mark, going back, just to make sure I'm clear, too, and I think that you covered this with Supervisor Demont. So, on Option Three, the surplus would be basically what we, the Board of Supervisors, decided was a surplus. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And on Option, Option Two, the biggest concern is that if you reduce that, when everything does come back into what we consider normal, we would have to advertise basically a tax raise, or we would need to cut services or cut the budget.
That's correct.
Option Three with the rebate, the problems would be, you said they would be going out at a higher rate, and our citizens have less time to come up with that money to pay that. And then, in a month or longer time, we would need to rebate the difference?
That's correct.
And then, we run into challenges with mailing the costs, unclaimed checks, loss in the mail, and those type of things, correct?
That's correct.
And then, with Option Four, if we do, through the Commissioner of Revenue, that assessment, am I, am I to understand that it would still come in a little bit higher than last year's, just because of the rates?
The 80% assessment ratio puts you basically in line with what we budgeted based on normal growth patterns.
Okay. I was, I was just trying to compare the PPTRA rate of 35.82% there versus the, somewhere I saw, the 25 from the previous year. Oh, no, okay.
It was 30, it was 30% last year. And a lot of that has to do with, the PPTRA rate is based on the vehicles that are within a value structure that qualify for relief. So, you're going to see a little bit of variation there because of the way that, the particular vehicles that fall within, in a particular grouping, if that makes sense.
Okay. And the biggest obstacle, in my understanding, from Option Four, will just be the manual input. And this could be, this would be a one-year approach. I mean, or we could make it that it's only a one-year, and then we would come back to reevaluate the next year?
Yes. Really, any of these options, you know, you can, you can do on a yearly basis. At least up until the sunset provision goes on the, on one where you can adjust the rate.
Well, I, my opinion is, right now, I'm leaning towards Option Four, just because it would be a neutralizer and bring those rates down to provide tax relief for our citizens. Unless I'm missing something, and I know the Commissioner of Revenue says that localities are doing different things. I would like to have more research to know what maybe other localities are doing similar to our, to us.
Madam Chair, in listening to the conversations, I think you're down to either Option Two or Option Four is what I'm hearing. I think there were, I think there were four that felt Option Two may be a good option, and I've heard several for Option Four. So, those might be the two that you want to see if there's any consensus on.
Make a comment, please.
Certainly.
I think that all three options, Two, Three, and Four, you get the end result, the same end result. I think Option Four just offsets more of the work and responsibility to the Commissioner of Revenue's office. Is that too gross of a description of what's going on here?
Option Four does create more work for the Commissioner.
Option four does create more work for the Commissioner's office than the other choices. Option three creates a tremendous amount of work and is very inefficient. It would be an inefficient process for the whole government to do. Option two, as Mark has said, and Supervisor Demonts, a big challenge would be when the rates go, when the values go down. We would have to make an adjustment.
So if I'm understanding correctly, revenue's the same for any of those options. It's just, how do we go about it? And quote unquote, the fear of raising taxes, it's, it's almost semantics at this point. Because one way or another, I mean, if you want to rate, lower taxes permanently, this isn't where we need to lower taxes permanently, right? We need to lower taxes in the real estate, real estate taxes permanently, if that's in fact where you want to get some revenue, right? Because this is a much smaller piece of our revenue sources for our budget. So I would encourage us to, to look at as taking on the responsibility for what this is. If that, if we're giving, you know, giving the revenue back to, or not making our constituents pay as high a tax rate, great, let's celebrate that. But I, I like what Supervisor Biggs says. Let's inform the people that this is just a one-year activity. And then if it means that we raise the rate a little bit, it's not going to go back to, to neutral next year. I can, I can't imagine it, right? It's a huge swing, right? It didn't just happen in one year either.
Well, this swing did happen in one year. $237 million in one year.
But it depends like which month you start in, and which month you end in.
Well, the, the value is based on January 1st of this year.
Uh huh.
And it went up between that number and the previous January 1st of 2021 by 237 million.
But if you went December to December, it'd be a different number and maybe higher. It's just so happens that we only measure on January.
It's, yeah, it's based on January 1st.
So I think, I think our constituents are, are smart enough to understand that we're trying to, to prevent them from paying a lot of taxes. So, but they also understand that we have to pay our bills. So in a year, you know, we can't give the store away. I don't know what the right saying is, but, you know, we have to increase the rate to, and again, I don't think it'll, it'll go completely back, right? I'm curious to, to ask the question about when house values decreased around 2008, whatever years, they must have gone flat at least, right?
Yeah, so, so essentially, we, we were very fortunate because we did the reassessment right before everything plummeted. But when we did the next reassessment, there was virtually no growth. So we went, like, if we had, if we weren't lucky, if we had reassessed in one of those other years, we would have been in a situation. But the difference in that situation, in this situation, is, is by law, you have to show revenue neutral and provide that rate. And that rate is not considered a tax rate increase regardless of where it goes because you are doing revenue neutral. You're providing the same level of tax liability. So in the, in January, when, when we sit down and we look at that, that, that particular tax liability, whatever that number is, is what it is, and you don't have to advertise that. Now, if you change from revenue neutral to some other number, then you have to advertise it at that point. But this, under this particular scenario, there's not a provision in the law that says that you have to go to revenue neutral. This is just a choice that I'm presenting to you as if you want to have the same level of revenue that we budgeted that is consistent with normal growth trends, this is the rate that you would have to have in order to get there.
Which in one way could be defined as revenue neutral, right?
That's correct.
So we can put that language in our, when we pass this. The intent is to keep this revenue neutral.
The total revenue is neutral, but individual people might, some people might go up and some down based on their vehicles.
It's the same thing with the homes, right?
It is exactly the same thing. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that it is exactly the same thing as the homes. It's an average, so different people would be affected differently. And if that's the option that the board desires, then at the next meeting, we would have a public hearing on the new rate? And then we could vote that night, Marty?
Versus if we deliberate, we will extend it another couple of weeks, or another, another couple of weeks until we come to some consensus.
Yeah, you would have to advertise seven days. So if you were to change the rate, we would have to advertise it and need seven days in order to have that public hearing change the rate. And that, whenever that was, would, you know, delay those values going to the treasurer for, for her to send those out.
So I'd like to change subjects again. What is the definition of consensus? Is it all seven? Is it majority? What is a consensus for this board?
We have more information. Before we move ahead with that. Marty said that we will need to do an ordinance to do the separate class.
Yeah, if you're going to create a new. Which is the rate for that class.
Could you say that again, so the public could hear it?
Yeah, the, the board's going to have to adopt an ordinance in order to create this new class and then set the rate for the new class. So you have to advertise two successive weeks. So it'd be, the earliest you could get it would be the last meeting in September. But that's only if this board adopted a resolution tonight scheduling that public hearing and authorizing staff to adopt an ordinance doing that. So consensus won't work if you want to get something done by the end of September. If you want to think about it, make a decision next meeting in September, then we could, we could get it done in October.
First meeting in October.
It's going to take a month.
And then it would be probably six week, six weeks late, later than the tax bills are normally mailed.
Are any of these quicker?
Yeah, the number four is quicker.
Is it really quicker?
Yes.
It's, it's just a resolution.
Process wise, we, it, we believe that it is quicker too. We believe that. We've never done this before. We can ask her, but we did ask her, yes. That does assume that everything works like we think it's going to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other follow up?
Yeah, Chair Blevins, I'd like to chime in again. I guess I spoke too hastily. After hearing the Commissioner, she seems very confident in getting this done. So I, and after hearing that option two would require ordinance, it, it makes sense to me that maybe option four is the better one to pursue.
Thank you. Supervisor King?
Well, I just want to make sure we take care of our citizens. The way things are now, inflation, all, I'd be fine with option four. Should we, do we have to move the due date?
If, if there's.
Time to do this?
If there's consensus, and I was going to go back to that consensus, this is all thumbs up on, on option, let's say option four. I'm not assuming yet, I'm just saying, if there's consensus on option four. What I would suggest, that's the one that requires a public hearing, or does not require a public.
Just a resolution, but also a concurrence from the Commissioner.
So if there's consensus on that tonight, there's really no additional action other than that consensus that the board needs to provide tonight.
Right, what I, if, I would suggest that the resolution be put on the September, first September meeting for approval. And then in the interim, you can get the consent, to get the concurrence from the Commissioner. Share the resolution with her.
But we would, but the board would not have to take an action to advertise any.
No, sir, just a resolution.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Demonts?
Um, I just have one thing to say. I, it goes back to what I said originally. I think we can put all the language that we want and do all the education that we want right now into the tax rate info. But the reality is, next August, if the values go back up, we're going to be talking about it as a tax increase. That's just the reality. And if we're talking about it as a tax increase, it's also likely that we're dealing with a hole in our budget. So I'm in favor of option number four.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd?
Well, after listening to all the conversations, I'll have to say maybe option two is not the cleaner one. It sounds like option two's a, a train wreck. So I'll be, I'll be fine with option four.
Not as bad as a few of the others.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Shepherd, I didn't hear you.
I said I, I would be okay with option four. I think it's probably the viable option if, if Ms. Royals is okay with it. She's the one that's got to do the work.
Thank you. Vice Chair Biggs.
Keep forgetting to turn my microphone on. As I said before, I'm willing to, you know, go with what the majority wants. I especially like the fact that the Commissioner said that she could do it because that was, that was one troubling thing for me for option four. So I can go with option four.
Thank you. So board, what I'm understanding is that we do have consensus for option four. The request for the Commissioner of Revenue established an assessment ratio that will be basically, I understand correctly, a neutralizer for that and will give relief to our taxpayers. Am I correct?
I believe so. Supervisor Baum, did you chime in? She, she's indicating good, okay.
Okay, all right. And so do we need to make a motion? Do I have a motion?
But we're still in work session.
I'm sorry. Okay, we'll put that through.
And Madam Chair, all we needed, if option four is the desired alternative, all we needed on that one this evening is consensus to move forward under that plan. So no formal action from the board needs to be taken this evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on. Merchants' capital tax.
Madam Chair and Board members, staff has put together a, a little, as I call it, a little snippet of information that Angie's going to pass out that I wanted to go over just briefly since this came to light last week. We've tried to quickly do some, we've, we've tried to do some research to share with the board just for information, so you'll be aware. Out of the 95 counties in Virginia, we've determined that 44 have a merchants' capital tax. Of those 44 counties, it appears that most of those generally have one, at least one unincorporated town in the county. That's kind of how the merchants' capital tax seems to be the preferred. In those counties, 44 counties use B-Pole tax for retail merchants in lieu of a merchants' capital tax. I thought that was interesting, 44 use B-Pole, 44 use merchants' capital. And there are seven counties that have neither a B-Pole tax nor a merchants' capital tax. One of the questions that may come up this evening is, how many, what are the dollars? In fiscal year 18, it was about 1.3 million. Fiscal year 19, approximately 1.4. Fiscal '20, 1.5. Fiscal '21, a little less than 1.7. Actual for fiscal '22 was right at 1.5. The amount that's in the budget for fiscal year '23 for the county for merchants' capital tax is right at 1.5 million. Our, a couple of our speakers mentioned some of the numbers. The number of entities that were assessed merchants' capital tax by Montgomery County in fiscal year '22 was 917. The total amount assessed on the five largest payers of the merchants' capital tax for fiscal year '22 was right at $612,000. So the top five are paying a, a, a good portion of that. Again, this is, this is on the agenda this evening for board discussion. Again, if there's any consensus that comes out of the discussion this evening, the board, or, excuse me, the staff will bring information back based on that consensus.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. We'll go around the room and start off, let's see, Supervisor Shepherd?
To me, that sounds like an awful unfair situation when only five businesses pay the biggest majority of that tax. And they bring in the most business and probably have the most employees in this county. So I'd, I'd be, I'd be all for getting rid of it.
Thank you. Supervisor Fitchakowski?
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of getting rid of it. I wish that by the time 2022 rolled around, it would have been phased out. That would have been easier to, to take. But, you know, just for the sake of everybody listening, what, what is the difference between the merchants' capital and the B-Pole?
I'll let Angie or Mark grab that one.
Merchants' capital is based on the amount of inventory that a business has at the end of the year. It's on a cer, the amount of inventory they have on a particular date where B-Pole is assessed on sales throughout the year.
And, and counties can have B-Pole, not just towns?
Counties can have B-Pole. The reason that that hasn't been an option that we've addressed in the past is because we do have two large towns that have B-Pole, and we would not be able to assess B-Pole on the businesses in the town. So it would be a significantly lower amount than the merchants' capital.
Thank you for providing that information. I think that's important. Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of getting rid of the merchants' capital. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor King?
Well, to start with, I'm in favor of getting, getting rid of it. I'm sitting here reading this, we was provided. And you know, some of these mom and pop stores is paying more than chain stores. And they're paying higher taxes on that than a big chain store. And I just, I just feel it's unfair tax, and I'd be for getting rid of it. Thank you.
Supervisor Demonts?
In order to have a better understanding, I would need some more information. I would need to know which seven counties have neither a B-Pole nor a merchants' capital tax, and what's their annual budget? And, and what is that county like, I guess? Kind of where is it situated? I have concerns about eliminating $1.5 million out of our budget. I, I was not here for the history of this tax. So I know there's also a history of how this tax has been treated in Montgomery County. So I'd be interested in some, some of the historical information. I don't think we have enough information at this time to make any kinds of decisions about it at an initial discussion without all of us having an opportunity to get some more information. On, on the surface, how are we going to recover $1.5 million in revenue? Where would we get that? Where would it come from? And then also, I'd be interested in a deeper dive on my own on how the different counties are using B-Pole in lieu, in lieu of merchants' capital, and then the seven that have neither. Because we would be, if we chose to eliminate merchants' capital tax, it would be eight out of 95 in Virginia. And that's not even 10%. So I'm wondering why of 90% of counties in Virginia said that they want one or the other. I just have a lot of questions, especially with this additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Baum?
Does someone remember exactly what backcountry number was that they paid last year? I think it was over 300 million. Which is more than half of the top five. So they're probably number two or one for the county.
They're number one.
The first one, it was $337,000.
Uh huh. I'd, I'd be open to, does anybody in the state of Virginia, you know, have a tiered merchants' tax?
We can find out.
Hmm, because it does seem like it penalizes the largest employers, you know. I, I, what is the actual rate? 44, no, what is our rate? And where does it actually fall within? And where does it actually fall within Virginia's counties?
We, our rate is $3.05 per $100 and assessed at 20% of the actual value. And we are number one in the state if I'm, as I understand correctly.
That's correct.
So $3 at 20% the value.
Right. And we are number one in the collection, not number one in the rate.
That's what I'd like to find out, what the rate is. Can someone also explain why the actual collections went down between 21? I mean, they went up from 20 to 21, but went down from 21 to 22? I mean, I know the answer is COVID, right? But.
It's based on, it's based on inventory at December 31.
Sure.
So I, I can't.
Yeah, it's, it's due to, you know, the merchants not having the inventory on their floors. In other words, if it's not there on January 1, they don't get taxed on it. So with all the low inventory, the, the values are down.
And inventories these days, are they normalizing or in our county? Anybody know?
I don't know.
If you ride through the auto dealerships, they're not normalizing.
No, that I understand, yep. So I think with the additional information that Supervisor Demonts requested and the answers to my questions, I'd like the additional information to, I'm not opposed to reducing or possibly eliminating, but I agree that filling a $1.5 million recurring hole is a big hole. You know, we don't, we can't always depend on having the revenue to fill a hole like that on an annualized basis. Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Well, I share some of the same concerns. I do think that it would be good to look at, as Craig has listed here, the five largest payers because that does seem like there is an inequity there. But I'll tell you what my concern is. As you know, I'm always on my soapbox about the Journal Assembly only giving us certain ways to raise revenue. And unfortunately, most of those are regressive. But they're the only tools that we have in our toolbox. And when you're looking at taking $1.5 million out of a budget, when you're looking around and we know we have needs both on the county side and the school side and everything else, that's a lot of money to take out. We also want to, of course, attract businesses and keep businesses in our county. But along with that, when citizens are living in our county, they're going to expect services. And one of the things that brings citizens to our county, as you well know, maybe there'll be disagreement with some in the room, but school systems are looked at. And so if you're talking about taking $1.5 million out of a budget, where would you take it out? Law enforcement? Schools? County departments? Reduce the staff? The county staff? Where, where is that going to come from? Okay, so you might say, well, we can count on new growth. Well, can we? Is that always going to be? Is that something that then is going to be the replacement for that? Are we going to look at increasing real estate property tax? So, I mean, it's good to say, hey, I want to get rid of it. Like, hey, let's get rid of the real estate property. Let's get rid of all taxes. But you really have to look at it on an individual basis because a lot of these counties that, I would like information also, I agree with that. When you're, we have the two towns that have all the meals and all the room taxes. We don't really have that many restaurants or hotels in the county. So we're very limited on how we can bring revenue in. So ought to be maybe looking at the whole picture and, and maybe not just jumping into it, but looking at the whole picture and figuring out, how are we going to balance this? If we do make a reduction or if, you know, the majority of, of the folks here want to just get rid of it, then what are we going to look at getting rid of for $1.5 million? I think you have to, you know, sort of like being on a fixed income type thing that we hear a lot about. And, you know, the county's sort of on a fixed budget. And if you just pull out $1.5 million, you got to pull out something with it. So that's sort of where I'm coming from. I'd like some information because our county is very unique. It's not like a lot of other counties. So you really need to look at, you know, what are your available resources for funding? Let's make it fair and let's make sure we have enough to cover our budget and the services that our citizens expect. So that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair Biggs. So I hear where Vice Chair Biggs is asking, where would we make up the revenue of 1.5 million? One of the disadvantages of having this merchants capital tax could be, should be considered our ability to retain businesses and attract new businesses, especially with our competing neighboring counties of Pulaski and Roanoke. I'm sure that all of you probably received an email earlier today from Backcountry. And they're considering that other localities do not have this merchants tax. I believe it's a disadvantage for our businesses to be able to expand. We are going to penalize someone for inventory because they didn't sell it or restrict someone because if they have too much inventory to meet the demands or to entice more business, that we penalize them. Got to look at the factor that if we could retain or attract a new business that would employ 300 or more citizens from Montgomery County, just the return on that alone and the economic growth, being able to retain businesses here. And that is, we're coming up on reassessment for value, for growth that way as well. I'd argue too, that I believe that it is an unfair and disproportionate tax. Five companies are paying the majority of that tax and I feel that's unfair. These companies create jobs and they give back to the community. They give generously back to our community, to our schools. So I am in favor of eliminating this tax. And I feel that it's just time for it to happen. Any follow-up?
I believe Angie had something else she was going to add.
I have a minor point of clarification. The information that was sent to you in the mail indicates that the 2021 merchants capital tax that the county collected was just over $1.7 million. And the amount that is on the handle that I gave you this evening is a little bit less than that. That's just because it's a different basis of accounting. The sheet that I handed out is on cash basis. It's but, our budgetary basis. And the information that was provided to you was what was pulled from the state's website that shows our audited amounts. I just wanted to clarify that neither one is wrong. They're just on a different basis of accounting.
Thank you. That's always good to point out.
Does anyone have any follow-up?
Yeah, there's two people with follow-up to the supervisors. You want to start with Supervisor Bone and then Supervisor Demonts?
Yes, ma'am.
And then Supervisor Fitchakowski. There you go. One, two, three.
Thank you. Supervisor Blevins and Fitchakowski and King and Shepherd, I'd love to hear your ideas of where to take the $1.5 million out of our budget. Just your points of view of how do we replace this revenue, please?
I'm next.
Right now?
Why don't we, why, why don't we let the other two supervisors and then go back to answer Sarah's question, maybe? Is that okay Chair Blevins?
Supervisor Demonts.
Thank you. According to the, I'm looking at the guide to local businesses published by the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, just because we're comparing them, Pulaski County and Roanoke County both have B-Pole.
Okay Supervisor Fitchakowski.
I want to kind of go back after I answer your question, which I need some help from our county administrator. Do we have $1.5 million to make up for this?
Right now, tonight, no. Now, over the course of the year, we'll have to see how the revenues come in to address that. But short answer, right now, no, because we do have a balanced budget.
Okay, and we wouldn't be implementing this tonight anyways, so.
No, sir.
It would be later on in the year.
Not unless you want to give staff a stroke, no.
The whole thing about, well, we, we can't lose this money. But this, this money isn't fair. Did you, did you look at this list? Did you look at some of these big, huge corporations that are paying nothing, hardly? Four figures, four, $5,000? And you've got others that are paying $337,000? There's no way. And I'm not just talking about the, the actual amount. I'm talking about, one of them's a warehouse. It's stuff that's just sitting there and you're going to tax them on it. So what are they going to do? They're going to have to work around it. It's just a, it's a totally unfair system. It, it's not because, and it's unfair because we don't have merchant capital police going around to every mom and pop store busting their back door and checking out their inventory. So unless we can do it fairly, I don't think we should do it at all. And this county ran into this issue years ago and should have been working towards getting rid of it. And I think now is the time to do it because we are in a better position than we actually thought we would be. And I think by getting rid of it, we are going to stimulate more business. And I think that will come into the county and make up by far more than, more than we need. But I think we will be able to find that 1.5 million to get rid of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Supervisor Shepherd has something.
Yes Supervisor Shepherd.
I would just remind everybody, we're getting ready to go through reassessment next year. And I'm sure there'll be more than that come up out of that. That's all.
Thank you Supervisor King.
Yeah, I just have one thing to answer Supervisor Bone's question. We make it up by growth. I mean, I understand your point. I really honestly do. But when you sit here and I've been sitting here, I've had this here for a while, and look at it, when you got local mom and pop stores, small businesses paying more than big business, as Steve said, it's just not fair. We don't have, the county don't, my understanding is, I may be wrong, but the county don't have people going out checking inventory? It's an honor system, is that correct?
I believe that's how it's reported, isn't that correct? It's based on.
It's an honor system.
Yes.
And if something's not fair, it's our job to step in and stop it. That's all I got.
Yeah Supervisor Bone, and then I had a comment.
I believe that we have very honorable people in our county and that's why it works. Okay, I'm, again, I don't have any problem reducing it or eliminating it. I just don't want to do that until we figure out where the budget is cut. And we have reassessment every four years. We don't always eliminate revenue sources along the way, right? We have very limited revenue sources. I would like to know additional information, if any counties recently, in the last 10, 20 years even, if they've eliminated this merchants capital tax and if in fact, new businesses came into the county. That's all I've got, thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Well, I was just going to make the point that we talk about growth, that we want growth and we want growth to make up the difference. And I think what we need to remember too is, if you're talking about growth of businesses or you're talking about growth of population, and we know for a fact that, you know, we've approved two big developments down on Prices Fork Road and we know people are going to move in there, that growth means an increase in services. It's just the way it works. So when you talk about growth, you also have to plan for that growth and you're planning for how you're going to pay for the services that those individuals are going to need and want. So I just put that out there as a reminder.
Thank you. Again, I'm a proponent of eliminating this tax. I feel it is unfair looking at the information. It's hard to imagine that some national brand realtors, retail sellers here are paying less in inventory than some of our local stores. That's, that's hard to, hard to believe. It puts our businesses at a disadvantage. We also need to think about the fact, what will happen if businesses pull out of Montgomery County to go to a different county where they do not have to pay this tax? What about companies or businesses that we want to be able to retain and expand? Several businesses have already reached out to me on full support saying this is a burden for them and that it should have been dealt with years ago. I do believe that this is the time that we move forward with reassessment and growth in those existing businesses and being able to retain. What if we had a big business that paid over $300,000 that would look to see about moving out of the county? That's a loss of jobs, a loss of income, and that's a loss of that revenue anyway. Speaking to some of our economic department partnerships, this would be a disadvantage, obviously. They agree that this would be advantage with our competing Roanoke and Pulaski that they do not have the merchants tax. So I think that 1.5 million can easily be replaced with retention and attraction of business. I'd hate to lose out on a business opportunity because this puts us at a disadvantage.
Madam Chair, I've heard a number of questions this evening that staff will be glad to go back and work to provide answers to. What, what are thoughts on moving forward with this item?
Do I have a motion for staff to draft a resolution to eliminate?
We're still in work session.
We're still in work session, so you've sort of.
Okay.
Yeah, I get the consensus maybe.
The consensus then?
And what are you asking Chair Blevins, a consensus to draft a resolution to get rid of the tax?
To eliminate tax.
Without any further discussion?
Without any answers to the questions that we have?
Would we not bring that up during discussion at that time in a public hearing? Marty, would you advise?
Yeah, it's going to take an ordinance to repeal the tax since it's an ordinance. And, and so, like I said before in the last topic, we need a resolution authorizing staff to draft an ordinance and advertise the ordinance. And that would take, you know, a month to do, two meetings. You have to advertise it twice. So you could either do that tonight or you could do the resolution at the next meeting, you know, authorizing staff to move forward with advertising and, and developing the ordinance. In order to advertise the ordinance, we need to know what, what it's going to say. Is it going to repeal the ordinance and no longer have the tax? Or is it going to be reduce the rate? Or, so we do need to know that if you're going to advertise it.
What is the consensus?
I would love to get some ideas of where the revenue. I would love to get some ideas of where the revenue is going to be taken away from. I think it's silly for us to move forward with eliminating a tax without knowing at least that information.
Well, I think some of the supervisors have questions. I think we need to let them get the answer to their question before we move forward with it. Just our respect for our board.
Thank you.
So Chair Blevins, what I'm hearing here, and I guess, there seems to be, there seems to be a thought that we need to go ahead and get some answers, and one of those answers would be how we're going to take 1.5 million dollars out of the budget. Like what's going to be squeezed to get that money?
All the other answers too.
Yeah, and all the other things. I think Craig has capitalized of them.
Yeah, I think several officers are making notes, we'll compare after the meeting.
You can watch us on rerun too.
You can do that, we've learned that trick too, yes ma'am.
We do that, we do that the next day.
So-
So do we have consensus to move this forward to the next board meeting and, and discussion with the, our questions answered?
Maybe with the-
Is everybody okay with that? Yeah, I see thumbs up.
Okay.
Have another work session. We'll have that scheduled as another work session for the first September meeting.
And Chair Blevins, Supervisor King is giving me a signal, you know, that signal he gives sometimes.
Yes, yes ma'am. Let's go ahead and take a 15-minute recess.
Come out of work session first?
Okay, let's, yes, let's have a motion to come out of work session?
Motion.
Motion and second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Fitchikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Sumotz?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Now, let's take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back in 15 minutes. Do everyone back? Okay. Okay. Okay.
Back now Sherri.
All right, we will resume the meeting. Next up, items of consent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Fitchikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Sumotz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Right, next up, under new business. Montgomery County Public Schools Operating Fund FY '22, carryover county funding.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a question as to what this is going to be used for, if this is going to be applied towards the, the repairs that were just announced that were needed.
And here comes Dr. Whitaker.
I can't see you back there, that's good.
Yes, our intention is to put those funds towards the project. It just didn't, towards, you know, there's many projects. But we had our meeting on, was it August 2nd? And so we had not brought those projects forward to our board yet, but that is absolutely our intention.
Thank you.
I know-
The 16th, yes, they saw the projects on the 16th, but our meeting was before then.
Supervisor King?
I know some of your projects is power suppression and everything. Are we going to move them up?
Yes sir. So what we're doing right now, the board has given me the ability to identify those priority projects. So we are picking those ones first, you know, those fire ones we can do immediately. So getting those approved through our funding, and then those are the top of the list.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And we will be providing you all with that presentation next week at our joint leader, joint leadership. We will have our team available to answer your questions as well at that time.
Does anybody else have any questions for Dr. Whitaker? Dr. Whitaker?
I know.
Sorry.
You're everywhere now.
Well, thank you for being, being here tonight. Can you tell me what the original, I know this is county funding, do you, can you tell me what original category these funds were at, and can you explain why this money was not yet spent?
Yes, hold on one second, I'm going to get Ms. Miana to come up, because she's got the documents with her.
Thank you.
Those funds were in operations and maintenance category, and they just weren't spent, they were just left over at the end of the year.
Okay, I just, I just wondered if there was any particular reason- Okay, I just, I just wondered if there was any particular reason that those funds that were available weren't used, especially in light of some of the critical conditions we heard from the school board's presentation?
Sure, you know, the best answer I can give you is not probably the one you want, but I can't speak for the individual who was making those decisions before. As soon as it came to my attention that these things needed to be addressed, I put together a team to help me, because they have great expertise, and pulled together a list for us of the things that needed to be addressed. I understand your question, because it's the same question that I have. My hope is that we are, you know, the work that we're doing now is able to, you know, we're certainly showing everything that we know and have available to us, and certainly want to address those concerns.
And is it my understanding that your next, you did a presentation of your priority and needs, and your board will vote on that at their next meeting?
So they've asked me to go ahead and move forward with those items that would be priority items that I can, because, you know, everything's on a timeline, so with the cares funding, what we want to do is go ahead and get the ones approved that we can to switch to that funding, and so they've told me to go ahead and move forward with the, you know, the ones that we would see at the top of the list in terms of safety and security, so we can just get that moving. Some of these are easy to do, some are, you know, going to take a little bit more time like roofs and things, but our goal and plan is to get moving on everything that we can as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for supervi, from supervisors?
Chair Blevins, just one quick thing, I heard you say you've assembled a team to help you move forward on these items?
Yes.
And I just want to say thank you for assembling a team to do it.
Absolutely, we have amazing, amazing people, and you'll, you'll see them next week, but they are certainly happy that the things that they are concerned about are going to be addressed, and, you know, I have the opportunity to help organize them, but they certainly are leading me with their expertise, because I am neither a builder nor a skilled tradesperson, though my husband will laugh to, I think I am at home sometimes.
And want, just to follow up, you did say that this original money was under operations and maintenance, just that it wasn't, wasn't spent, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other follow up? No more discussion, madam clerk, if you'll please call the roll, thank you, Dr. Whitaker.
Mr. Trichakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next up, Montgomery County Public Schools Operating Fund FY22, carryover federal, state, and grant funding. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, and I'm, I'm sorry, motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Trichakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Montgomery County, next, Montgomery County Public Schools FY22, year-end encumbrance carryover.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Madam clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Trichakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Now, apologize, I've lost my place here. Are we at?
We're on.
School nutrition?
Yeah, school nutrition, you got it.
Okay, all right, school nutrition, I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Y'all like to ask her one question.
Certainly.
Didn't mean to bother you, but I appreciate it.
Oh, no problem.
I don't know how to say it, so I'm just going to come out and say it. Kids that need free or reduced lunches?
Yes.
My biggest concern is kids going hungry. Are y'all addressing that?
Yes, so right now, you know, free kids are free, but also this year, our reduced kids are free as well, and so those students are usually paying a 40%, you know, they're paying 40% of the cost, but for this year, they've also been allowed to, they are also getting their lunch for free as well. It's an interesting way that it works, if you want me to give you just a little bit more information, some students, so if a student's family receives temp, which is, you know, typically what you would call food stamps, they're what's on what's called a direct certification list, so those students automatically receive lunch already, and their parents don't have to fill out an application or anything. So that's a really great system that works in the back, and so that makes sure that individuals receiving those services are ready, they just get the free or reduced lunch. And then for the first 30 days of school, it's based upon last year's status, so everybody was free last year. And then we work really hard to contact families to get applications out, you know, to really try, but if there are folks who need help, we can help them fill out the applications at school, you know, we want to do everything we can to get everybody qualified that can get qualified.
I appreciate it, because that's my biggest concern, is kids going hungry.
Well, we also, and this is, if you don't mind me sharing, we've started what's called the FERC, F E R C, it's the Family Engagement Resource Center, and it's actually over at Montgomery Central, and so families that may need clothes, or food, or bathing supplies, shoes, coats, we take a lot of donations, and so then if families know, they can call us or call a school, they can actually go pick what they want, or tell us the sizes they need, and so that helps us give outreach as well, and we just started it at the end of last year, so we're, we're trying to get the word out to more families about that.
That's good, thank you.
Absolutely.
Chair Blevins, can I ask just one follow up question on that?
Yes, ma'am.
If somebody's status changes through the year, can they also automatically change their status with the school, so if a parent loses a job, or becomes eligible for food stamps and?
Yeah, if they get, it's been a while since I've run food service program, but if, if they get on the list, say their family moves and they begin getting, receiving services, we should be getting those updated lists, and they roll right into our systems, but anytime a family's status changes, you know, they can let us know, and we can get them the new application.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, great question. Any other comments? All right, madam clerk, thank you, Dr. Whitaker, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Trichakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
See you guys next Monday night.
Next up, resolution National Suicide Prevention Week and Recovery Month.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I just want to say, it's such an important thing, because I think all of us up here, in one way or another, probably have known someone that, or a family that this has happened to, so I'm glad to see this on here.
I've got another comment or question, does anybody know if, I just heard on the news this morning that some states haven't publicized the 988 number?
Ooh.
Because their counties don't have the resources to handle all the calls. Do we know what the status is? I mean, it's not relying on the counties. If you're in Virginia.
It's a state.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to be sure that we weren't having things fall through the cracks, thanks.
Absolutely, it's, it's very important. All right, madam clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Trichakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, county attorney report.
No report, madam chair.
County administrator report.
Madam Chair, I was actually going to say no report tonight, and then I remembered I did have something in the text that I need to mention to everyone, and that is the December 2022 board meetings. Normally, we have held only one meeting in December due to the holiday season, and canceled the second meeting of the month. What we would like to suggest, the first meeting of the month is scheduled on December the 12th, the second meeting is December the 26th, which is the day after Christmas. The options are to leave the first meeting as scheduled December 12th, cancel the second one, the second option is to move the December 12th meeting to December 19th, which puts it between the two scheduled meetings. My only concern about that is that's also
Right up on it.
Right up on Christmas, and several folks may be away that week. My recommendation would be to just leave the first meeting on the schedule for the 12th, and then cancel the second meeting, but we wanted to get consensus, I wanted to see what the consensus of the board was on that, so we can bring back a resolution to address that. All right, I'm seeing.
The 12th is good for me.
Thumbs.
12th, 12th thumb, yeah.
All right, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. We'll start off with supervisor's reports, we'll start off with supervisor Shepherd.
No report.
Supervisor Bone?
No report.
Supervisor Demonts?
Just a small report, supervisor Biggs, or vice chair Biggs, excuse me, and I had the opportunity to go to attend the VACO Board of Directors meeting, I know some, some of our members also attended the summit in the morning, I was not available to go to that. And so we had our committee meetings and board meeting in Roanoke just last week, it was very, very nice to be so close to home, that was a real change for, for us, and we had some pretty robust, in my committee meetings at least, I'm on the energy, environment, and agriculture committees, and we had some very robust discussions about legislative policy positions for VACO to take for 2023, for the upcoming general assembly, so we'll have information coming out of our November meetings for the policy positions for VACO, so that'll be something to stay tuned for, but if any of you guys read any of the VACO policy positions specific to the committees that I'm on, I'd be happy to talk about any questions that you have. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor King?
Have no report.
Supervisor Trichakowski?
I also attended the VACO meeting, and it was very nice just to have to drive to Roanoke and not all the way across the state. A lot of good speakers, a lot of interesting information was passed along, I do regret not being able to stay for lunch, but I had another meeting that, early that afternoon, I had to go to, and then later that night, I went to the Fire and Rescue Commission, and they have voted on a incentive retention type package that they will be presenting at some time in the future for our volunteers. I think it's very comprehensive, it doesn't leave anybody out, and it has a maximum, so we know it can't get any bigger than a certain amount, but I won't divulge that yet, but it's something for, for us to consider at a later date. I did have one other thing, but I don't have it in my head anymore, so, next.
Nice, Chair Biggs.
Okay, so Chair Blevins was also at the summit for the morning, and at that morning session, we had three cabinet members from Governor Youngkin's cabinet, our appointees, that talked to us about various topics, and our main speaker was Dwayne Yancy, who many of you probably remember worked for the Roanoke Times, he started his own online newspaper, it's free, if you subscribe to it, it's called Cardinal News, it's covering Southside and Southwest Virginia, and interestingly enough, people across Virginia are reading it, and so if you want some just like, just regular news, not opinion, but regular news, like about what's going on, that's a good resource there. Then, as Ms. Demonts talked about, we had our VACO board meeting, and I think I sent to you for your consideration, Operation Green Light, and, and that came up at our meeting, it's going to be a time when I guess everything, they want government buildings to be in green in honor of our veterans, so it will be something that takes place in November, and there's a sample resolution that we can pass, and so you can sort of look that over, and if you think it's something that we would like to do, you know, we can, we can get that done. One of the things that, oh, and the supervisors, the VACO certified supervisors program is now only going to be three modules, and you can complete it, starting in January and finishing by November, so it's not going to be the year and a half like it was before, so if anyone's interested, they've, I think it's on budgeting, and leadership, and was that land use? I can't remember what the third one is, yeah. So anyway, that came up, and then, as April said, we had a big discussion, and really during the VACO board meeting, and you've got to remember, this is made up of, from folks all over the state, education came up, the public funding for education, and one of the things that Billy Keiger, you know, you all have heard me mention him before, he's a supervisor from Rockingham County, and one of the things he keeps stressing is there is no surplus in Virginia until you pay your bills, and by paying your bills, I think what he is looking at is all the needs that the state has neglected, especially in public education, school facilities, roads, incentives for economic development, all of that, and so that was sort of ringing true during that meeting, so just something to think about. And they had over 200 people at the summit, so that was good to know, and I think that is it. And that we could just, if you guys, if staff can remind us about the green light, because we might forget.
And, and, and we're already working on that, when I received that information, we're already working on some thoughts, so.
I just thought it was really, really neat, something different, so, and that's my report, Chair Blevins.
Thank you, thank you, just a few things, want to remind everyone of our special joint meeting with the school board, that is Monday, August the 29th, we'll be meeting at the school administration office, 6:30 for dinner, and then the meeting to start at 7:00, and I ask if any, any members have anything they would like to add to that agenda, to email me if they have topics of discussion for that agenda, and thank, I'd like to thank everyone for allowing me to do electronic participation, obviously I missed being there with you guys tonight, I do appreciate Chair, Vice Chair Biggs helping guide along, since I can't see people approaching, and Mr. Meadows for keeping the time for me, so I do appreciate that. With that being said, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, Sherri.
Thank you.